Okay, I have 6 o'clock, so let's get this special meeting of the town council started.
Okay, Bob, that means you're not here. It's really 7:00.
Oh, I'm sorry. Yeah, it's 6 o'clock here. That's right.
When are you coming back?
Uh, not until probably sometime, probably second week in March.
Okay. Just wondering. That's okay.
That's the plan. Zoom works very well for this.
Oh, yeah.
For sure. All right, let's start with the Pledge of Allegiance. I pledge allegiance to the flag.
To the flag of the United States of America. And to the Republic where we stand. One nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
And I don't think we got an agenda out for this meeting. I think I sent it to Deanna, but I'm not sure if she saw what I sent out. So I'll talk to her about that so we make sure, because I know a lot of people like to see the agenda before these meetings. I'm just going to go through the agenda because it's going to be fairly quick. Town committee appointments, public works committees, town administrator/policeman position. I put accounting manager position, but I'm not sure what we'll talk about there, but we'll see. HR contract and term limits. So we'll start off with town committee appointments. So we put this off because we had some work to do. Chris Willoughby, you're out there, right?
Yes, sir.
Oh, good. I want to be sure you're there. Okay, so we'll go through the committees. First one I have on here is the Community Center Committee. Now, that committee is not described by ordinance, though it has been town council appointments in the past. And now that's a working committee. You know, that's not a committee that just sits and has a meeting once a month and decides, you know, what walls to paint or what carpeting to put down. They actually work on the building, the Community Center building. We have one opening there, and I have three people who've applied for it. Marcy Meyer, Melanie Davis, and Jim Palowski. Jim Palowski is the only one of those people who I know well. Jim's worked in steel mills and, you know, is the kind of person who could work on terms of repairs of committees. So that would be my endorsement, but I'll leave, I'll open it up to discussion.
Okay, so Bob, Marcy Meyer runs the Bridge program, which has been going on there for years, and on Tuesday nights, and she took part of the money that the Bridge group does in the two bathrooms, not at the front of the building, towards room. I'm trying to think, past the Y, they took their money and she reorganized all that and had it cleaned up and painted and updated. So I would think we would want to consider Marcy Meyer.
Okay, well, and again, this isn't, the way they've been working is they do try to save the town money by doing a lot of this work themselves. I don't know if Marcy would be up for that sort of thing.
I think she would. I think she's a go-getter and she knows how to get people to do things.
And I would put my two cents in for Melanie Davis, and the reason why is I've known her for a while. She actually approached me to ask me if there was an opportunity with Boys and Girls Club of La Porte County Board. I currently sit on that board and am past president, and you rarely have anybody actually approach you and say, "I'd like to come onto a committee with the not-for-profits." Since then, I've gotten to know Melanie much better. She's headed up our resource development from the chair's perspective. She's a true professional. I would just add her name to the list. I'm not saying that she's the best candidate for the Community Center. I'm just saying that she's a great candidate. You had mentioned her name, Bob, so I just put two cents.
And Marcy has applied for other committees that I think might be a better fit for her, and I certainly would support that.
Well, I support Mike Johnstone's recommendation on Melanie. She's a great asset for all of us.
Okay. All right, so does anybody have anything else to say? Otherwise, I'll entertain a motion.
Well, I've known Marcy for quite a while, and I would certainly think she would do a good job also. It sounds like we have some good candidates here. It's what it looks like to me.
Just so we know, what other job did Marcy apply for?
Marcy has applied for a number of committee appointments. My particular thought for her was the best place for her, from talking to her, was that she would be good on budget and finance.
Okay.
So that was my thought in talking.
Is that an opening?
Yes, it is. Yeah, well, we'll be getting to that one.
Okay.
All right, so just to start, I'm going to go ahead and start, and you guys can defeat it, but I'll make a motion to appoint Jim Palowski to that position. Is there a second? If there's not, then I'll entertain another motion.
Okay, I make a motion to appoint Melanie Davis.
I would second that.
Okay, now Melanie Davis, did I misspeak before Melanie Davis is the one who I thought would be a good fit for budget and finance?
Oh, you thought, I thought.
But I think I misspoke. I think I said Marcy Meyer. Or did I?
You said that Marcy Meyer would be good for budget and finance. Is that what you meant?
No, Melanie Davis.
No, I would agree with that. Bob, I would agree with that.
Okay, so.
Could Melanie Davis present her point of view on that?
Sure, Melanie, go ahead.
Thank you. I appreciate the endorsement all the way around relative to budget and finance or the Community Center. I think that Community Center might be more appropriate and more aligned with my interests since I walk in and out of there frequently. So that would be my opinion, and let it stand there.
And Melanie, you're okay with doing work at that Community Center, painting, that sort of thing?
Well, I don't know that that necessarily is the foregone conclusion, Bob. You know, I would have to get very much acquainted with what is happening, why, and what is needed. So I'm not volunteering to paint walls necessarily, but I'm certainly volunteering to be on the committee, and I will oversee or take a look at what needs to be done and how and when.
Okay.
Oh, and Bob, I just want to interject. Remember, that's under now our town administrator and police chief, and he can get anybody to do anything. So I can't, I'm too old to get up and paint less than ground level, but I'm on Melanie's page, but I'm not worried about that. She knows how to get things done, and I just wish we had two spots because she and Marcy would be a great team, in my opinion.
So we have a motion. Refresh my memory. What's the motion?
I made a motion for Melanie Davis.
And it was seconded, right?
Because I thought you wanted Marcy on the budgets, but I make a motion for Melanie Davis.
Okay. All right, any other discussion?
We need a second.
I think we had a second, I believe, didn't we?
Mike.
Okay, Mike Johnstone.
Any other discussion? Okay, Mike?
Aye.
Mary Lou?
Aye.
John Coker?
Aye.
John Wall? Okay, and I'm going to just be opposed just because, again, I think there's a better choice out there, but that's okay. All right, next up is HR. The town ordinance, 31.100, says that it's a town council appointment. We have two people who've said they'd be willing to serve. There's Ernie Summers and Mary O'Neill who have applied. I'll make a motion to nominate Mary O'Neill. Is there a second?
I would second that.
Second discussion? Okay.
I think we've got two quality people there to serve, so I'm glad we have people stepping up to the plate.
Okay, so we have a motion and a second. Mike?
Aye.
John Coker?
Aye.
John Wall?
Aye.
I'm an aye. Mary Lou?
Aye.
Okay. Okay, Police Advisory Board. Those are presidential appointments. And presently, the Police Advisory Board is Dan Moon, Zach Neff, and Bob Rose. I would suggest that, well, I guess I get to decide, and I would say we make no change there.
So, Bob, who is it?
There is no, basically, I'm saying we aren't going to make a change. Well, except, I take it back. The two presidential appointments are Dan Moon and Zach Neff, and the chief gets to decide if he wants to continue with Bob Rose in that position.
Okay. Well, I, all right. Thank you.
That's how that works.
Dr. Lemay?
Yeah.
Last year, I brought all three gentlemen and had a conversation with them, and I've been in email contact with them quite frequently, and there's no indication that any of the three want to step down. So I would recommend, as you had stated, to keep all three the same.
Great. Okay. Next is budget and finance, and that one also is not codified in our ordinances. And those are presidential appointments. That's budget and finance. Melanie Davis has applied, and John Wall has been kind enough to run those meetings because he's got a lot of background in terms of finance, although he's not a member, but he's been helping us out, which was good because, basically, we've had a need. What I would suggest is, since these are presidential appointments, is I'd like, I'm going to step down from that committee and have John Wall take over my position. Since he's been running the committee and taking care of the agendas, I think that's probably only reasonable. We have Melanie Davis who applied, but we already put her on the Community Center Committee, and there's no absolute need to appoint anybody else since it's not codified as to how many members there are. So I guess.
Who's on the committee? Who's on the committee now?
Budget and finance.
Jagman.
Beat by votes. Laurel Kozinski.
What now?
Laurel Kozinski.
Okay, so the town clerk, beat by votes, Laurel Kozinski. I'm on it. I'm going to step down, and Joe Jagman is on it. So there really is not a need to replace anybody else on there unless we feel we need to.
Bob, I would only, from the standpoint, again, I raised my hand before on the budget and finance. It's Mike. I would be honored to be on that committee.
Let me think. You've been, kind of like me, been on there, right? Been showing up for the meetings, I think?
I don't think I, well, John Wall would know because he chairs them all. I don't think I've missed one.
So I'd be fine with putting you on there. I can do that. I don't, since it's not codified, there's no reason that we can't appoint another town council person on there. So I'm fine with that.
Hey, Dr. Lemay, can you let in Dick McNamee? He's trying to get into the meeting.
I'm sorry. Yep, yep. Okay, got it.
And the other thing is, I think we need to diversify some of the committees so that all of us have an opportunity to represent committees.
I agree. Okay. All right, so budget and finance, I think we looked at, and that was the presidential appointments.
Right.
Okay, so next up is park board.
Excuse me, Dr. Lemay, did you say then that Mike Johnstone is going into the budget and finance?
I am going to, go ahead and add another member. You know, that's an even number, but that's not really an issue. It's an advisory committee anyway.
So John Wall is in your place, and Mike Johnstone's on, okay.
Right. I mean, but do you have an objection to that? What's that?
No, no objection here.
Okay. Next is park board. That's a town council appointment. And according to our ordinances, that's, again, a town council appointment. Kendra Bartlett is serving in that role now. We've had Jim Deener, who applied for that position, Tim Perry, and Melanie Davis. Tim Perry, since he's a clerk, probably not a candidate for that, I would think. I don't know.
Correct.
But, so I guess my thought is Kendra Bartlett has done a pretty good job in terms of that role. I think the parks have been run pretty well. We have an endorsement from Zach Neff, who was on that committee, and in fact, I think chairs that committee with her.
I think Kendra's done a wonderful job, but she's also, I think, served two terms. So I think we should give somebody else an opportunity, and Zach does a wonderful job of keeping all of us in the loop, and especially on Facebook.
Well, I guess my concern is, is since Kendra does so much work, I'm just wondering how much work is going to be done in her absence, and I'm not sure what's going to happen to morale of that committee if you do make that change.
I would only, Bob, I would only offer, this is my, I would only offer that, back in the spirit of our discussion later on about term limits, is that turnover of committees is not a bad thing. And just in the terms of the idea of term limits, I think eight years is a long time. And I would suggest we make a change there.
I'll entertain a motion.
I make a motion that we nominate Jim Deener to the park board.
I would second that.
Now, you guys are aware that Jim Deener was like the most vocal opponent to Melrose Park, which is probably one of our finest parks right now. I just want to make that point because he was very vociferous in his disagreement with the park board developing that problem.
And Bob, so were a lot of other people because of the amount of money that was spent there, so I wouldn't hold that against him.
Right, but they're not applying to be on the park board either.
Well, that's.
So there's a motion?
Who would wind up being on the park board, then, if we go with somebody different than Kendra?
You'd have Zach Neff.
Park board would be Anita, Zach Neff, Joyce Schmidt. So those would be the four members.
I'll just say, you know, I know we're not talking about term limits right now, but in my heart of hearts, I'm wondering if we've got a solution in search of a problem. Part of our issue with a town of our size is that we have a kind of a limited number of individuals that, number one, have an interest in helping, and, number two, come forward and actually help. Or, you know, so I, I'm not really convinced that the term limits are something we really need to do. I mean, I, again, you've got people that come in here and they work really hard. I'm not sure why it's necessary to tell somebody that's doing that, you know, "We don't want you anymore." I don't follow that logic.
I've been impressed with how many people have put their names forward. I think we've, at least since the last eight years that I've been following and been on different committees and such, before, it was, nobody would apply because they didn't really know they could apply. And I think that if we made, we've made the effort. Bob's made the effort, put it on face, put it on our website, and I don't know how many different people have applied for different positions here, but it's over probably close to a dozen, I would guess, which is, I think, great. I mean, it's, there's nothing wrong with having different viewpoints on these different committees. I mean, it's, I think that makes it stronger, not weaker.
Yeah, and you know, I guess that's true as long as the work gets done.
You know, my.
Right. Correct.
Okay.
I guess I have a problem. There's, you've got, you're pulling in two different directions. On the one hand, we're saying we want term limits, and on the other hand, we want staggered elections so that we can roll things over. I just, I don't know. It's interesting to me how this is all going to work with such a small group of individuals that are willing to help.
Okay.
Well, I think you might be surprised if it opens up more. You might have many more people wanting to help. I mean, I, you know, it's all, it's all how it's all presented.
I follow that, John, but, you know, you've been on the park board for a long time, so maybe give us a little rundown on, you know, what you think is going to be improved by Jethison, somebody that's worked as hard as she has.
I've been impressed with the last two years that I've been on the, I'm not on the park board, but I attend the meetings the best I can, and I think they've done a marvelous job.
So why are we shaking it up?
Especially on the stops.
So why are we shaking it up? Just in the interest of this term limit thing, which, again, with such a small group, there's, I think there are a lot of opportunities. I guess what I'm trying to say is, there are a lot of opportunities for people to help out. I get that. And I'm glad we're encouraging people to sign up. You know, people coming out of the woodwork is a great thing. On the other hand, there's very few people that work as hard as some of the ones that are heading up some of these committees, so just to throw them out on their ear because we want to have new individuals on the committees doesn't make a lot of sense to me. If somebody's been working really hard and doing a great job, that's different than just trying to open up the committees when you don't have that. That's where I'm a little confused about what you guys are talking about.
I already stated my opinion about turnover, so that's where I'm coming from. John?
Any other discussion?
No.
Okay, so we have a motion, and I believe the motion was for Jim Deener. Was that correct?
Correct.
And it was seconded.
It was seconded by Mike Johnstone.
Yeah, so Mike Johnstone?
Aye.
John Wall?
Opposed.
John Coker?
No.
I'm a no. Mary Lou?
Aye.
Okay, so that was three to two against. I'll make a motion to appoint Kendra Bartlett. Is there a second?
I'll second that.
Any discussion? Mike Johnstone?
Aye.
John Wall?
Favor.
John Coker?
Yes.
I'm in favor. Mary Lou?
No.
Okay. All right, so, next up, okay, so the next one is we have the Water Advisory Committee and the Street Commission. So we have, they have, my recommendation is that we combine those two into a Public Works Committee. And I frankly think that what we should do is put everybody who wants to be on that committee on that committee. And that would be the present members of the Water Advisory Committee and the present members of the Street Commission, except for Kevin Flemington because he hasn't shown up for meetings. The other people who have applied for that position are Scott Pop, Melanie Davis.
And then you're going to, did Ernie Summers, too?
And Ernie Summers.
Let me look on my list here.
On the water.
Okay, you know what? I screwed that. Yeah, I'm sorry. It is written there. I printed it up. Okay, and Ernie Summers, too. So does anybody have an objection to that?
Okay, so Bob, as a person that's on the Water Advisory Committee, so how many people would be on the committee?
That would be 10.
Okay, and so would it be just one council person, or would?
Yeah, still be just the one. You'd be the one.
Okay, and would we, so we'll figure out a time we're going to meet because we meet the fourth Monday of the month.
Yeah, and you know, and then, of course, you know, we'd have the head of the Street Department and the head of the Water Department at those meetings also.
Okay, so that would be Tom and Greg, right?
Yeah, right.
So who do we have for the water, who applied for the Water Advisory? Do we have, do we have any openings on the street?
Well, yeah, because Kevin Flemington hasn't been showing up, so Melanie Davis would replace him.
Okay, well, I think she'd probably be okay if she's already on the park, the Community Center. I would think, I think she's still on here, but so.
Can I voice my opinion? I'm really not sure what this type of, let's say, volunteerism entails, and I would certainly want to give my all to whatever specifically is needed with the Community Center. So I'm not sure that it is appropriate or something that I would want to do to be assigned also to this committee.
Okay.
I'll follow your guidance, but I would sense and feel that I probably should withdraw from this consideration to have full concentration on the Community Center.
Okay.
Thank you, Melanie.
All right, so that actually gives us nine members.
You would just have to drive the snowplow, Bob. Yeah.
You would not have to drive the snowplow, no.
Right, so then it would be, so do we have just one opening with the water?
Well, so let me tell you who the nine would be. So we've got Mary Lou McFadden, Rick Blank, Laurel Kozinski, Rick Remages. Street Commission has John Wall, Dan Tanis, I'm sorry, so there are two council members. John Wall, Dan Tanis, Don Ranky, and Tom Dolph. And then the people who've applied for that position in addition are Ernie Summers and Mary O'Neill.
So.
Where was Scott, did Scott Pop, did he apply for that?
Oh, I'm sorry, Scott Pop, too. I forgot Scott Pop. Yeah.
Well, Mary's already.
What's that?
I said, Mary's already on.
Mary's already on a committee. So do we really need two council people since John's on the, John's on the fire, the police?
Well, John does have a lot of expertise when it comes to roads, so I guess I'd like to take advantage of that expertise.
You don't think Tom Dolph does?
Well, I think it's good to have somebody in a supervisory position or who's in a supervisory position over Tom on that committee.
Well, I could see John Wall attending the committee, but he doesn't have to be on the committee because of P. That's okay. Then I don't need to be on the Water Advisory Board if we've already got one council person.
It's up, you know, whatever people want to do, I'm fine with. I'm just, my thought was to combine those committees, and I don't like turning people away.
Dr. Lemay and Mary Lou, this is Chris. This, I just want to point out that this topic of combining these entities and actually codifying some of them, this is a good example where this one's going to be a work in progress. I would imagine this committee will work, and then we eventually, I would suggest that we pass an ordinance that has the committee, you know, whether it's council liaisons or whoever the members are, establish that it's advisory so that there's a little more formality to it, and everybody understands what's there. And then we, I know I'm jumping ahead a little bit, but with Chief Swistex's new duties, it may be important, we need to establish who those department heads are reporting to and whether it's directly to the council. So I mention all of this because these are different things that we've talked about with the Water Board and with street, and I think those are important things that this committee can work to establish, and we can get that as part of the code.
And I know, I like the idea of having two council people on there. We've got John Wall with his street experience. We've got Mary Lou, who's been on the Water Board for, how many years, Mary Lou?
Um, longer than I've been a council person this time. You know, I was just thinking, you know, we can see how it works out, but I think that we only need one council person on there, truly. And if John wants to be on there, I'm fine with that.
Well, why don't we do this? Why don't we see how it works out if one of you wants to step down? How about that? We see how it works? Does that sound reasonable?
I think Chris makes a good point. We're kind of, it's a work in progress. I don't think it's important to differentiate how many town council guys are there as much as it is trying to make sure that the construct is what we want. You know, I think you start getting a little unwieldy when you start talking about 10 individuals, but maybe if we spend a little time, I don't, if we just leave it like it is now with the people that are already involved in those two groups, Chris is going to work on a little more structure for us, and then we could decide how we want to proceed from here. I don't know that that has to be decided tonight.
Okay. Okay, so right now, we're going to go with everybody who wants to be on there, and we'll try it and see how it goes.
Okay, so Bob, you need to realize that Rick Remages, okay, so just a little history on them, and Deanna can correct me if I'm wrong. When I became a council person, Rick Remages replaced my term, so I think his term is up this year.
You're talking about the?
Water Board, the Water Advisory Committee.
Well, but the Water Board is now defunct and is now a Water Advisory Committee, so I would think that.
But you went into what those were, so I'm just telling you that. I don't know who's on there, but then I would think you would want to, so just so you know that, and then we don't have, so then I'm still on there, Rick Remages, Rick Blank, and Laurel Kozinski. We need to replace Bob Gallagher, who moved into Michigan City.
Right, and we did that with, provided everybody agrees, we did that with Scott Pop.
I didn't hear a motion on Scott Pop.
Well, again, I made a motion, well, okay, so my suggestion is to let everybody who wants to be on there be on there. That's my motion.
Okay.
And we make it a work in progress. Is there a second to that?
I'll second it.
Okay, any other discussion?
No.
Okay, I'm in favor.
However, Bob, who made the motion to put Scott Pop on?
I made the motion to put everybody who wants to be on there, on there, and Scott Pop is one of those.
Does that include Ernie Summers, too?
It does.
Oh, so you actually have 1, 2, 3, 4, 5, 6, 7, 8, 9, oh, 10, plus Tom Dolph, plus Greg, who's on it. Okay, got it. All right.
Realizing that we may alter that in the future depending on how the structure shakes out.
Yep. Yep.
So Ernie Summers is on there?
Yes, as is, let me go down the list here. Laurel Kozinski, Rick Remigius, um, Ernie Summers, Mary O'Neill.
No, I, I thought we were not having Mary.
Okay, we took Mary O'Neill off of there, did we?
She's coming on D H R.
She's coming on D H R.
Okay, so we'll take her off of there. Uh, and then the people who are now on there, which are Mary Lou McFadden, Rick Blank, Laurel Kozinski, Rick Remigius, John Wall, Dan Tannus, Don Ranky, and Tom Dolph.
And then your Pop guy.
And Ernie Summers.
Yes. Scott Pop.
You said Ernie Summers too, did you?
I did, yes.
Okay.
So that's the motion. Is there a second?
I'll second it.
I thought I'd say that, but that's okay.
I'm in favor. John Wall?
Aye.
Mike Johnstone?
Aye.
Mary Lou?
Aye.
John Coker?
Aye.
Okay. Uh, next up is the Police Commission. Uh, and Chris, now correct me if I'm wrong, but I've got here two presidential appointments from the Town Council. Is that right? I have my notes here. Yeah, so, so what, so basically what we have now are Mark Swistick, John Wall, and John Coker. And then, uh, we also have Bob McFadden as the citizen appointment, and I believe that's an appointment by the Town Council. So I would make a motion that we just leave that alone. So that's my motion.
Oh, I have to recuse myself.
That's right. So somebody else has to second it if they want a second.
I'll second it.
All right, any discussion? All right, so that's the motion. Uh, Mike Johnstone?
Aye.
John Wall? All right, Mary Lou, you're recused, I guess.
I'm recused.
I'm in favor. John Coker? Good deal, all right. Moving right along. Okay, so Advisory Plan Commission, and according to what I have here, two presidential appointments. And we have Mike Gorman and Anita Remigius, who are requesting to be back on the committee, and then Melanie Davis applied. And so, Chris and Mike, correct, these are two presidential appointments?
That is the way they have been handled, yes.
All right, so I'm going to, I'm going to suggest we stay with what we're at with Mike Gorman and Anita Remigius on the A P C.
Well, and Melanie, just to be clear, right, Melanie has, is on?
Right.
The Community Center.
He's on the Community Center Committee, right. Okay, uh, next up is the Building Commission, and this is a Town Council appointment. We have six members on the Building Commission now. Statute says there can't be more, can't be less than four members. And so we absolutely wouldn't need to add anybody, but we certainly can, and we've had some people who've applied. We've had John Gorup, we have Ken Klosner, and Neil French. So we have six members now. If we want to make it an odd number, we should appoint one person. I have concerns about John Gorup. He's, I understand, an orthopedic surgeon who lives downstate. I think this is a committee that you really need to live here. Uh, you have to go out and look at properties. So my, my feeling is that it really should be someone who's here year round. And I'd be fine with either one of the other two. Neil French, I know, has some building experience. He works, well, not hands-on building, uh, works for a building company.
I think he's also a surveyor too, isn't he?
I wasn't aware of that, but I think, I had, I think I had both those folks send out an email talking about their experience.
I nominate Ken Klosner. He's an electrical contractor that's newly retired, and I, he lives on Shorewood. He lives here as many months of the year as any of us, so.
I would second that.
This is Chris. I, I just want to point out, it's a, it's a good idea, because we, we've, at times with an even number ran into issues and questions of quorums too, and it hasn't been, but sometimes you hold your breath making sure, so adding that, that odd number will be a, a good addition.
And plus, Bob, he replaces Tom McDonald, who passed away.
That's correct.
Yeah.
Yeah. So there's a motion and a second. Any other discussion? Okay, uh, Mike Johnstone?
Aye.
John Wall?
Aye.
I'm an aye. Mary Lou?
Aye.
John Coker?
Aye.
Okay, so Ken Klosner. And last, but not least, is the Board of Zoning Appeals. That's a five-member board. Town Council appointment, though you must be a resident. Mike Gorman, who's chairman of that committee, has endorsed Barb Morgan, who's willing to serve another term. John Mangle has applied for that position, and that's really the choice we have, is between those two. Discussion?
I nominate John Mangle.
I'll second it.
And my only concern is, is I know John's been against a lot of the things that we've done. I, I just question how well he's going to do in terms of following the rules of the Board of Zoning Appeals, because, you know, you have to follow definite guidelines as to whether or not to grant variances. Uh, I know we had a previous Board of Zoning Appeals that granted variance just because they liked you. Uh, I don't want to go back to those days. So that's my thought, but we have a motion and a second. Any other discussion? All right, John Wall?
Opposed.
Um, John Coker?
Aye.
Mary Lou?
Aye.
Mike Johnstone?
Aye.
And I'm just going to run record as opposed, but that's what we got. Okay, uh, I think that's the committee appointments. We got through it. Uh, and we actually dealt with the Public Works Committees. We discussed that. Next agenda item I have is the Town Administrator slash Police Chief position. So at this point, I think at the next meeting, we need to make a amendment to our salary ordinance to describe this, the roles of this position, and, um, the remuneration that the chief's going to get for it, for, for, for performing these duties. I don't know that we have a whole lot more to discuss regarding that tonight, uh, but hopefully we'll have that amendment at the next meeting. Anybody have anything else they want to say about that? Yeah. Okay, next up is the Accounting Manager position. Again, I don't know what we're going to do with this tonight. Uh, this is really up to the Town Clerk, and he's going to have to decide how he wants to use this position. I think when, when he decides how and when and if he wants to use this position, then we probably need to get it through, um, the H R Committee, come up with a job description, come up with remuneration. So I think, Tim, that's just kind of hanging out there. Maybe you can let us know what you want to do with that.
Thank you, Bob. We are, um, working very closely with the individual that I think everyone's been considering, and, and we will come back to the, um, Town Council with our suggestions.
Okay. Okay, next agenda item is the H R Contract. Uh, Mary Lou, I think you sent that out today.
I did.
Talking about how you'd like to, um, put our H R consultant on a stipend. I guess the only question I'd have there is, do we really need a stipend, or should this be paid, a paid position paid per, per job?
Mark and I have researched this, and we've talked with her, and, uh, so with Mark coming on, we need to up, even though we are working on the, the handbook and the policies, now we have to change everything to have a Town Administrator, which she can do very quickly. Mark sent her, and she's not on a contract right now, on a new time card and, uh, one that you can do online, and she instantly got back to us at no cost. So I'm, she charges $50 an hour, so we could go that way, or we need this, here's what the most, the biggest priority is for the Budget Committee, is we need a salary survey to see where we are in the community and where we are now, and then we need to update the handbook, the policies. Um, I would like her involved. She used to help with all the orientation for the Summer Park Program, which Mark and I will be involved with, with helping Sarah Pluster, our, uh, park program, I'm going to call her. She's, uh, very organized and wants to make sure she has all the forms. And when we say that, it also helps down the line with Deanna and Tim, that if everything's in line, we've had their physicals, we check their references, and we do all of that. This person talks to them about what our policies and procedures are. So, um, she's, I'm looking, I'm comfortable with $50 an hour. I'm comfortable with $600 a month until the end of the year, and then we re-look at it in January, because I think we'll get our money's worth either way.
I guess I'm more in favor of the hourly rate, if we're going to do that. The other thing is, is, you know, I, I think we need to see, uh, how our Town Administrator slash Police Chief is going to, you know, what, what of these roles he may be able to assume. Granted, he's assuming a lot of responsibilities, but he's impressed me with how much he's able to do so far. So I think if we maybe go with an hourly rate for now and see what that entails.
The hourly rate would be fine, but I want to tell you, Mark and I have talked to her, because she came out with one thing, and one of the things that we looked at, uh, I'm very comfortable with documentation, and I'm very comfortable with what the rules are, investigation. Um, as you know, I, along with Laurel, handled the, uh, Water Department problem that we inherited, and I feel very comfortable with that. We didn't have any recourse, any lawsuits from that. But when we talk about, uh, the salary survey, the employee handbook, the policies, the procedures, the job descriptions and forms, I'd like somebody there. This person could screen the applicants and, uh, and help us with advertising, and so, and update job descriptions. So that's, I think we would be better off with the $600 a month, but if you think the $50 an hour is better, I'm fine with that either way.
Yeah, I guess, you know, as far as salary survey, I know we just did one of those not too long ago.
Two years ago.
Yeah. And I know our employees all got pretty good raises. I don't think anybody's undercompensated. I'm not sure we need to do a salary survey too soon, because I think it's going to show we're positioned very well at this point, and maybe we put that salary survey off for a while. That would be my thought, but that's just me, and I'm not on the H R Committee.
Well, you, you attend them, and, you know, if you want to know where we stand, we need to know what we're doing, so, uh.
But if we know we're doing well, do we really need to know? And I know, and I'm confident we're doing well. So that's, that's my thought.
Okay. I, I respect your thought, and I appreciate it.
Yeah, okay, so, um.
So the motion is to go with an hourly, or I'll make the motion that we go with an hourly rate. My only caveat would be if I think this, the H R Committee has some requirements and some needs, and I think that's a work in progress, from what I'm understanding from Mary Lou. So I think we, we also want to know how the expenditures are going, so if we're going to do this on an hourly basis, more, much like any of the rest of the contracts that we have out there on hourly basis, we get a report, you know, on a regular periodic basis from the H R Committee as to what's been spent.
Absolutely, uh, John. I just, I think in the long run, we'd probably be cheaper off to go the $600 a month, but I'll go with whatever you guys recommend.
So there's a motion. Uh, I'll second it. Any other discussion? John Coker?
Aye.
Mary Lou?
Aye.
I'm an aye. John Wall?
Aye.
Mike Johnstone?
Aye.
Okay, next agenda item is term limits. Uh, Mike Johnstone, that's yours. Uh, we discussed that a little bit before the meeting, but why don't you go ahead and kind of give us your thoughts there?
Well, as, as you know, I'm, I'm a proponent of this, um, and I think, uh, my original comments and thoughts, and as I think I sent out last fall.
Right.
For everybody to kind of look at and mull over. I've had conversations with, um, Chris Willby about, um, the structure, uh, but essentially, I'm in favor of term limits only because my experiences now, uh, over, um, a number of years with, uh, organizations that I've worked for, um, turnover is healthy. Um, and you bring in new ideas, you bring in new energy, um, and, and I quite frankly, on, on behalf of people that have spent a long period of time on committees, gives them an opportunity to take a rest, because one of the things that you'll hear me say as I'm presenting this, is that if you've completed your term limit, really, you do a sabbatical for a year. If you wanted to come back on that committee after a year, you certainly could. Or if you wanted to direct yourself to a different community and add your resources to it, that would be good. So, um, the, the biggest concern with term limits is, um, the issue to try to mitigate, um, turnover. So, uh, as we've talked, we have plenty of candidates for these committees, that's great. What you don't want to have is everybody coming off at the same time. You don't want everybody's term limits ending at the same time. So what is commonly done is you create classes, multiple classes. My experience has been you create three. So I'm, I'm presenting a Class A, B, and a C. So if you were already on the committee for three years or more, um, you would be granted one more three-year term. And at that, at the end of that three-year term, then you would go on a one-year sabbatical. If you're Class B, you've served some period less than three years, you would finish up your first three-year term, uh, depending on where you are in that, in that, and then you would automatically go into your second-year term. And then any new committee members, that'd be Class C, would obviously be eligible for two three-year terms. And this would create, I think, an orderly, uh, process. Bob and I talked about a little bit before the meeting. I, you know, we've got some committees now that have terms, but they don't necessarily have term limits. And so as we work our way through this, and we're not going to approve this tonight, obviously, we're going to have some discussion, um, but as, as we get to the point of finalizing something, if we do, then I would also suggest that this then would supersede anything else out there that currently exists as a term, where we do have terms. So if we have a committee that has a four-year term, this would then replace that, uh, based on the three classes and how long somebody's been on that. It's very simple, uh, but I think it creates an environment where, uh, people know that they're going to be on a committee for a certain period of time. Six years, I think, is a good span of time, um, and it's, it's a pretty big commitment on the part of someone to, to commit six years. But that's why there's two three-year terms, because if somebody is on there and they decide they want to exit after their first term, they certainly have that, that, uh, that opportunity. And that's why it's structured as two three-year terms rather than one six-year term. So I'd be happy to just throw it out for discussion.
I guess my thought, Mike, is why don't we have you get together with Chris with those ideas? Uh, why don't you guys put something together, get it out to us, and, uh, if we can get it out for, to the next Town Council meeting, we, we will. If we can't, uh, the meeting after that.
Yeah, as I mentioned to you before, Bob, I'm not going to be able to make the March meeting. I think we, you and I chatted about that.
Okay.
And so I, I'd like to push it to April.
Okay, I think we can do all of that. Any other discussion? All right, I don't think we even need a motion to that. Why don't you just work with Chris on that? I just want to get back to one thing with, as far as that H R Contract, then, Mary Lou, we want, uh, the attorney to review that contract then, right?
Well, certainly, yeah.
Okay.
I'll, I'll have her get it ready for Chris.
Great. Uh, I've got nothing more on my agenda. Open it up to public comments, and again, these are comments, let's, you know, Chris has reminded me at the last meeting that these are comments, not questions. If people have questions for us, we all have emails on the website, and we'd be happy to answer those, and I answer them all the time. So any public comments?